Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Tonight is the second step of our second public hearing, or our 1028 public hearing. This is our Blue Ribbon Phase Two project that we are planning to launch, which would be our 2025 to 2029 elementary school expansion and renovation and energy conservation project. Tonight with us once again is Mr. Jeff Quackenbush from Barnes and Thornburg, ready to present the legal aspects, as well as Mrs. Belvia Gray to speak on the financing aspects. And I will, at this time, turn it over to Mr. Quackenbush.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Smith, a pleasure to be with you this evening. So as Mr. Miles stated, this is our second preliminary determination public hearing on these projects and financing. As we've done in the past when we've had our second preliminary determination public hearing on projects, none of the information that was presented at the November 11th meeting has changed from tonight. So you have a choice as a board whether to go through that entire presentation again, and if you would like us to do that, we would do that, or you can waive that if no one in the community and the public wishes to have that presentation done at this point, and we can go directly to public comment. So it's your pleasure whether you want us to go through that presentation, or to just go directly to public comment if no one in the audience wishes to have that presentation.
Do any board members need the presentation? Do any audience members need the presentation on the 1028 again? Okay, Miss Dunn.
I did have one question. At the last board meeting, I had asked about the overall debt of the district. And for public record, could you please share what our overall debt is at this time?
Sure.
I believe it's important for the members of the public to know.
Sure. Yeah, good evening. So currently, the total outstanding indebtedness of the school corporation is $473,832,844. To put that into context, that is per capita, a little under $3,900 per the population of the district of 121,000. And as a percent of net assessed valuation, 6.8%. 6.8%. And as a percent of gross assessed valuation, it's 4%. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
So at this point, if there are no other questions from the board, then you should open it up to the public for any questions or comments they would have regarding just this project or this financing. And then at the conclusion of that, you can close the public hearing and move into your regular action items.
Absolutely. Do we have any public comment this evening on this presentation? If there's no public comment, we'll go ahead and close the 1028 hearing. Now, if you would stand with me, we'll open our regularly scheduled meeting.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did have a work session on the 11th. This is our first full board meeting since the election, so I would like to formally congratulate Shayla Mulholland on being our District One representative, Ms. Amy Norman on our District Three, and Ms. Crystal Puckett on being our at-large. And a great thank you to Eric Young for the campaign he ran. We will go on now to Blue Ribbon Update, Mr. Smith.
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Belzer Middle School serving lines are continue, almost finished to reopen. New hallway there, just on the south side of the two serving lines. New front beside entranceway, the metal is being applied to the underneath and around the fascia. Belzer Middle School tennis courts, they look complete, not quite. We will finish the top coating and the painting once spring breaks and we get some more temperature. Belzer Orchestra room is going back together. It now becomes all ADA compliant. Paul Creek Valley, a lot of hallway going back in, flooring and wall covering. Small gym, two coats on, there's striping and logo going on with two more coats following. Paul Creek Valley's front entranceway, the metal is starting to go on the front entrance there. Tennis court, same position, we have all the concrete walkways in, landscaping will follow along with the fencing. Paul Creek Valley softball, again, the sidewalk and landscaping, a little more work to do there. Soccer, scoreboards up and operational. New L E C C, the new interior walls are progressing along with the M E P, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and also the more of the interior walls and office space. And the exterior has started, and they will continue to walk around the building. They continue to do site work that has started this week and will continue on.
Thank you. Board, do you have questions about the Blue Ribbon update?
I just had a question. I wanted to thank you, it's looking really good. Will the athletic fields outdoors be ready at the middle schools for the spring athletic season?
That's the plan. We got the seating down, grass is started, so softball and baseball will be ready to go.
Thank you.
Any more questions about the Blue Ribbon? If there are no more questions about the Blue Ribbon, thank you, Mr. Smith. We'll move on to the Niola policy updates. Dr. Harshberger.
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. On November 11th, at the work session I brought forward, Niola revision packet volume 36, number two, for first reading. I now bring the revision packet back to you for a second reading. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
School Board, do we have any questions on those new policies?
I did have a question regarding two policies, just for clarification. Policy 2623 and policy 5410, they're around student assessment and promotion, placement, and retention. I know that our policies are changed following state law, and I wanted to verify that this was in regards to the third grade retention rate.
Right.
Put out by the state. And I did have a clarifying question. So the children are given the test for I read at grade two, and then if they do not pass, how many attempts are they given in third grade to pass? I know it said a total of three tries. Okay.
So they would have their first try in second grade, and then two opportunities in third grade. The March, and if they don't pass in March, summer assessment.
Okay, so there's an assessment in the summer, you said, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then that will go into effect this spring, correct, for?
Correct.
Third graders?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Did we give the test to second graders this year?
Yes, we did.
If there are no more questions on Niola policies, we'll move to the financial update. Mr. Miles.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight's financial report will include the last two months. You may recall, at our October meeting, due to the timing of that meeting, we did not have our September reports prepared. So tonight, you'll see both September and our October transportation and general fund reports. First on the screen, we've got our general fund. As it has been trending throughout the year, again, both our revenue outpacing our projections, so we're in a good place, as well as our expenses, less than originally projected, so leaving a better-than-expected or better-than-projected cash balance at the end. Little over 17 million there. Onto the transportation fund, likewise, transportation fund for September in a good place, with revenue and expenditures ahead of projection, as well as our cash balance at the end of September, just under $2 million. As we move on to October, we'll see much, much more of the same. Ending balance, general fund at the end of the month is just over 18 million in the general fund, and for transportation, about $630,000.
Right. Board, do you have a question?
Mr. Miles, we heard a moment ago, the debt that we have incurred as a district, a little over $400 million. Can you help me reconcile, I mean, I know that in business, we often run in debt without revenue gain. I'm not clear on how you balance that at a school corporation level with a debt that's almost half a billion dollars.
So, good question. So our debts, our debt is structured and funded by our debt service funds, and also by our, so the revenue that we take from local taxpayers, collect that twice a year through our property taxes, also funded through our referendum, so part of that debt that was mentioned earlier was approved for those, you know, those larger projects through the high school. So those funds, completely separate, we submit that with part of our budget each year, which was approved a couple months ago, and we will hear back from the state sometime later in December with our new budget, which will account for the funds to fund that, those debt payments.
So pardon my ignorance here, but is that common for other school districts to run a debt that high?
What we really, what, I don't, I don't know exactly what, how to compare our.
I'm just.
Oh, sure, Belvia's here. We've got Belvia, Belvia Gray, so.
Hi there, that's a very good question. Before I came here, I was also looking at some other districts in the area, because Lawrence Township, as Mr. Miles stated, you did approve a referendum, and so your taxpayers did already approve a larger borrowing outstanding. The district that I looked at was Washington Township, and they would be, I think, most comparable to you, because they also approved a large referendum several years ago. And their outstanding debt right now is $413 million. And so, as I mentioned, the percentages of assessed valuation, so Lawrence Township's is in the 6% range, Washington Township's is in the 5% range. And so, for some of our districts where you have growing enrollment, the, you have growing enrollment, you have a tax base that, according to the Standard and Poor's report, can support the level of debt, it is a little bit higher, but the detail of the report that Standard and Poor's provided said that, based upon your growing enrollment and the economics of the school corporation, that it felt very comfortable about the level of debt that you're supporting. Does that help?
And I would like to ask, what is our audit process in the year? What process do we use for the audit?
Mrs. Gray ran away on that one. So we go through an annual audit, that's, as one of the 10 largest school districts in the state, we're subject to a GAAP accounting audit, which we, because we're one of the largest districts, that went into place about four years ago. And so, we go through an annual audit, we convert our books from a cash basis over to more of a business-type GAAP system, so it accounts for payables and receivables, and so it gives a very accurate view of where the district is financially. So, once again, we do that, we do that annually. Each of those audits has turned out favorably.
And when we, when we do that audit, we report our debt, I'm sure.
Right.
So what is our bond rating right now?
So we have a bond rating, and I'm sure Mrs. Gray probably is, I see her grabbing papers right now. We get that updated each time we have a debt issuance, and so Standard and Poor's comes up, and it's, the rating is sort of in two pieces, and I'm going to let Mrs. Gray explain that.
Yeah, the, so there are two components to the school corporation's ratings, there's actually two ratings that you have outstanding. One is your, what they call the issuer credit rating, which is reflective of the creditworthiness of the school corporation. Your current rating is A, and it's stable, so that means that Standard and Poor's thinks that over the next one-to-three-year timeframe, you're likely to stay at that A level. The second rating that the school corporation has is called a underlying or programmatic rating, and that is based upon the school's eligibility for the State Intercept Program. The State Intercept Program is a program where, if you meet certain criteria, basically certain coverage levels, you're eligible for, like, if for some unforeseen reason you were unable to make your debt payments, this Intercept would kick in and make those payments. That has happened almost zero times in history, but it does provide a bolstering component to your overall rating, and that is a double A plus, also stable.
Let me ask a follow-up question, President.
Madam President. Yes, of course.
When was the, at what point was this rating given? Was that?
Oh, just a couple months ago, August 7.
So in August.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Ma'am, will you formally introduce your friend? Where does she work? And what's her capacity?
I kind of skipped right over that. Thank you, Dr. Smith. This is Mrs. Belvia Gray. She's principal at Baker Tilly, which is our bond counsel.
Municipal advisor.
Municipal advisor.
I'm your municipal advisor.
Bond counsel's job.
Thank you.
I'm here for all things finance.
Thank you.
Anything else, any other questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you.
All the information. Appreciate it. Okay, so if there are no more questions from the board, we will go on to our committee reports. And, Ms. Dunn, we just did policy, so please help us with this.
Yes, so it looks like we have policy revision packet volume 36, number two, has been moved to second reading and is ready for board approval and publishing. Should we vote on that this evening? Moving forward, the policy committee will work on administrative guideline revisions, packet 36, number two. There are 11 guidelines needing revision. Lastly, this past Friday, Dr. Harshberger received a new revision packet, value 37, number two. The update includes proposed revisions to seven policy, two new proposed policies, and proposed revisions to four administrative guidelines. And that will come before the board in the next several months. Thank you again to Dr. Harshberger for your work on this.
And thank you, Ms. Dunn, for reading and editing a lot. I got new glasses, did you notice? Yeah. Okay. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Puckett.
Ah, yes, Parks and Recreation, we have the Winter Market taking place on Thursdays. There are numerous Thursday dates, so you can visit cityoflawrence.org to see specifically what Thursdays that goes are. I have them here, but that's a very long list. And they're taking place at the, at the Community Center. Also, we have our Winter Fest coming up, which my family and I look forward to going to. That will be on, where did it go? Hold on, it's the whole thing, hold on. So it's November 30th through January 5th, Winter Fest, hold on, you guys, let me scroll back through.
Saturday night.
This Saturday.
Thirty, there we go, thank you, guys. On the 30th, and that too will be in Civic Plaza. We also have the Parks Board, we have the Golden Hour Game Days on Thursdays from 11 to 12 p.m. for our lovely senior community, and that will be at the Lawrence Community Center.
Thank you.
Sorry that we're not in order, but.
It's quite all right. Ms. Norman, do you have a report for the Foundation, please?
Yes, I do. The thanks for giving reception recently for donors was a success. We enjoyed great performances by our own Lawrence Township students. Please consider LT School Foundation on Giving Tuesday, December 3rd. The, we have set a goal of raising $2,500 on that day, and a lot of companies match. And then finally, teachers, the next EdX Shopping Day is Monday, December 9th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. here on the second floor. And that's all I have.
Okay. That's all we have for our committee reports. We will move on to our action items. The first action item is the approval of the 1028 preliminary determination resolution. Mr. Miles, please.
At this time, I ask that the board approve the 1028 resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the 1028? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move forward to the approval of the early childhood education programming and fees. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, curriculums, I'm sorry, Mr. Norr.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. I recommend approval of the curricular advisory recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any further conversation? All those in, oh, yes, please.
I do want to say how much it is appreciated. I was at an event at Lawrence Central, the Open House, and I was talking to members of the CTE program, and they were extraordinarily excited about the new recommendations. And so, I just want to give thanks to that committee for the hard work that they put in to bringing us such fantastic recommendations, and thank you so much for leading that, Mr. Norr.
So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I heard five ayes, so I don't think so. I guess we passed our curriculum. We will, now we'll move on, Ms. Puckett, to the approval of the early childhood education programming and fees.
Thank you, President Mustin, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Tonight, I ask for your approval for the presentation that was shared on the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. And any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with the ayes, have it. We will now move on to the approval of the Craig Academy. That is Mr. Kusik and Dr. Brown.
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. At the November 11th work session, we team shared information concerning the proposed Craig Academy. This included two recommendations, one, approval of the programmatic concepts for the building, and two, approval of a name change from L E C C to Craig Academy. Recommend the board approve as submitted.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. We have some members of the public that would like to speak to this. So I would like to now call Mr. Eric Young forward. Please, Mr. Young, we do know you, but state your name and your address, and we'll have three minutes for comment. And then, we have about four people scheduled to speak, so I would just ask that, once a point is made, just in the interest of time, to move forward. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Eric Young, 8354 De Kista Circle. I was glad to learn about the future of Craig at the last meeting. I would like to bring up a few questions and four points for you to consider. First, thank you for adding some estimates around the cost to tonight's presentation that's on the board docs. This information is very much needed, and I think allows you, the board, to make an informed decision and fulfill your promise of fiscal responsibility. There was much discussion at the last meeting about current staff transferring to Craig Prep. I understand some staff may make this choice, but I implore the board to ensure we are backfilling those positions. Thus, the cost of the resulting new hire should still be included in the cost of Craig Prep. As you know, we currently have many open teaching positions, and teachers have been raising alarms about the current class sizes, further signaling a need for more teachers. The presentation of Craig Prep indicates that we need this academy to compete with charter and private schools. Can you please share with us the names of the charter and private schools that are currently offering this type of academy, and what has been their enrollment trend? Can you please share the market research you've conducted that shows the strong desire for a school like Craig Prep? What will be the success criteria of Craig Prep? Could you help me better understand the process of student selection for Craig Prep? I know you've said it will mirror the current school choice process, but how does that work? Will there be considerations given to ensure there is diverse mix of students at Craig Prep? Meaning all achievement levels, genders, racial groups, and socioeconomic levels? And if so, how are those considerations incorporated? As reported at the last meeting, we launched 386 students to charter in private schools. How many of these students left for a school that offers what Craig Prep will offer? We also lost 80 students to HSC and 91 to Mount Vernon. Why did those students leave? I know some students leave because of family move, but I also know that we have quite a few families who choose to live within the LT district, but send their students to a different school after having, having attended an LT school. We also have many teachers leaving the district. In recent months, I have talked to many, many teachers and families in our community, and the repeating theme I've heard is that student behavior is a huge problem, perhaps our number-one problem. I was told over and over again that students are not held accountable and do not have consequences. This is not only a secondary school problem, it's at all levels. My request to the board tonight is to postpone your vote on this matter to allow time to make sure this is the absolute best use of this building and the best use of our money. We need to have more focus on improving student behavior, perhaps an expanded, quote-unquote, "alternative" school program that could help with student behavior would be a good use. I would also suggest, if you have extra money that needs to be spent, maybe we can look at a better funding for our schools, so teachers and parents are not funding Kleenex, Exo markers, calculators, and the like.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Young. Next, I have, we appreciate your comments, Ms. Amanda Rose. We'll wait till the ding-a-ding starts, stop, yeah. We'll set, we'll wait till we set the timer.
I was like, I don't get five minutes.
Seven. You get more than zero. We'll get this set for you.
It's fine. Can I go ahead and identify myself before?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. I'm Amanda Rose, co-president of the Lawrence Education Association, and also a resident of Lawrence Township. I live at 8502 East 56th Street.
Sheila, would you like me to do an alarm?
No, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Smith, and members of the board. Typically, when I address the board, it is on behalf of the teacher members that I serve. Tonight, however, I am speaking to you on the behalf of the students of Lawrence Township. Per the data shared at the work session, on November 11th, our district has over 16,000 students, 85% or over 13,000 of whom are students of color, and 45% or over 7,000 of whom are African-American. It concerns me that we are committing to serving only 200 students initially and up to 400 at full enrollment at Craig Academy, with a focus on African-American culture. That is only 6% of our African-American students and 3% of our students of color when fully enrolled. How is this equitable to the many students of color in our district? In addition, with the set enrollment limits, this proposal is perpetuating the class-size inequity we are already experiencing across the district, and that this board has committed to exploring through a district committee. Since 2018, our schools have seen a tremendous growth in multilanguage learners. And while I can anticipate the response to that being the increase of our immersion programs, I would counter with how does this help the ever-growing number of Haitian students who do not speak Spanish, but Haitian Creole or French. Our Spanish-speaking students, too, are not always benefiting from the immersion program when they are working primarily in their home language of Spanish, without enough English instruction or English supports. We have so many students in our district that would benefit from an environment focused on the African diaspora, an environment of smaller class sizes, an environment filled with the cadence, contribution, and pride of the African-American culture. So why wouldn't this be a focus in all of our schools? Finally, I am concerned that this proposal was begun in 2018, but in the last two years as LEA co-president, there have been no additional committee meetings involving LEA members, even though the November 11th board presentation stated that the committee was reconvened in 2023. Once again, teachers are expressing frustration that they are not only not being heard, but are not even welcome at the table. For these reasons, I urge you, at a minimum, postpone this vote on Craig Academy until a more fully inclusive and realized plan can be put into place. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rose. Next up, we have Ms. Karyobi.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. I'm Karyobi, Vice President and Member Organizer of the Lawrence Education Association. I'm going to skip. I have to ask why it is necessary to vote on the programmatic elements of Craig Prep Academy tonight. There are many questions from teachers and community members that have never been answered by district administration across the many times these proposals have been brought forth. across the many times these proposals have been brought forth. As an organizer for a teachers' union, my role is to bring teachers together around an issue. When I saw this was on the agenda for a vote, I sent out a call for input through an anonymous survey to our members. Like the pushback we experienced during contract negotiations, our methods and motives were called into question. It's disheartening to see that the concern of teachers are often overlooked or dismissed by administrators. We know schools met resistance from their principals for asking questions about the proposal and the distribution of the survey. This contributes to a strained relationship between the two groups, ultimately hindering our ability to provide the best possible education for our students. We believe that open communication and collaboration between administration and teachers are essential for creating positive and productive learning environments. A hallmark of a healthy community is how we handle conflict and have courageous conversations. I urge the board, the cabinet, and each of our administrators to pause and listen. Our teachers are ready to stand up and fight for all of our schools. We want your support in our work moving forward. For the 76% of respondents who questioned this proposal, I'm calling for a postponement of this vote until our more robust and detailed plan can be delivered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Obi. Mr. Eric Marty, please.
Good evening. I am Eric Marty, co-president of LEA, address is 3101 Winter Avenue. I am speaking tonight on the topic of the proposed Craig Prep Academy. I firmly believe that it is imperative that we provide an inclusive and culturally responsive curriculum for all students in our district. In surveying our membership of over 300 teachers, a frequent question asked was why we would want to limit this opportunity to only 100 students at each of two grade levels, eventually expanding to four grade levels, when we have thousands who could benefit from this proposed curriculum and similar possibilities. Our bilingual students, students of other nationalities and ethnicities, our LGBTQ students, just to name a few other subgroups, equally deserve to learn from a curriculum that celebrates their identity and allows them to explore the roots of their respective cultures. This is especially important as some of our national and state leaders in the political arena have ostracized and targeted some of those very same communities and students. Incorporating such curriculum into all our schools and providing our staff with the appropriate support and training would truly set our district apart even further as a district of destination. Within this, concerns have also been raised by our members in regards to the admission process. Outside of implementing an application and lottery process, not much has been shared about how the district plans to fairly choose which students will have access to this opportunity. I think offering more specifics on this process would help address some concerns and create more buy-in amongst teachers who can then promote the academy through their own personal networks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Marty. We appreciate all of you who have taken the time to come here and speak to us with us tonight. Board, Ms. Norman, do you have questions? Sure, sure. Yes, yes. I'm answering questions.
So first of all, I don't want to reiterate what comments were made. However, I do think that there are some ongoing concerns that I personally have as a member of the board. I think, first and foremost, we've heard tonight about the cost of, or the debt that we have in the district. And we know that running another building, our new administration building, with custodial cost, overhead deferred, or maintenance over the years, plus the maintenance of this building, we have not seen a rundown of what that cost would be over the years, which is concerning. We've seen costs such as potential staff, but we also haven't seen the cost of time, over time, what that would look like. In addition, when this was first proposed, it was in 2018. Since the last board meeting, as Ms. Mustin chaired, we have had an election. An election where we know that there are going to be potential impacts to members of our community. Lawrence Township currently has 25% of our staff, who are, I'm sorry, of our students, who are identified as English learners. We do not know how many of those students may choose to stay in Indiana due to, unfortunately, the election and the results of that election. At a recent meeting that I attended from Exodus and Catholic Charities, the annual refugee collaboration, it was shared by Cole Varga, the executive director of Exodus, that we have over 10,000 Haitian members of our community that are on temporary protective status. It is the hope of Donald Trump to remove to protective, temporary protective status for Haitian immigrants to this country. If that happens, it will have a massive impact, not just on Lawrence Township, but also to other districts throughout Marion County. We are relying on an increase in enrollment to do the work that we are asking the community to support, yet we are not guaranteed that the enrollment will continue to increase. I am very, very, very concerned as not just somebody who sits on this board, but also as an education, an educator in a neighboring district, about the impact that this will have. I've also seen how places like Logan's Port, that have a very large immigrant population, that we've had the Attorney General that is asking for records for undocumented students. It is a scary time, and one in which I am very concerned about taking on more debt in a district where we already are over almost a half a billion dollars in debt. I also am concerned that there is not a full fleshed-out plan for the IRE3. We will be passing policy about why, or what we have to do for the retention of students who do not pass IRE3. Unfortunately, that is going to hit home very hard here in Lawrence and throughout central Indiana and the state as a whole. We have not identified what the funding sources are to ensure that we are continuing to educate those students who will be retained. That is not, maybe they will be retained, but right now, SB 1 states that they will be retained. And we do not know the financial implications that this has for one year, two years, three years, four years, five. You get my drift. In addition, the number of students served is of concern. I also agree that the curriculum should be offered across the district. I'm also concerned that we don't know that we have partners. It was shared that there are potential partners for the adult education, but yet we don't have a fully, there's not a contract in place. We don't know if Excel or Crystal House Doors or another partner is willing to partner with us. And finally, I believe it is important to listen to our community. This is the first time I've sat on this board where I've seen a number of people that have spoken on behalf of something, inviting us to postpone a decision. And I would respectfully request that we listen to members of our community on this and postpone this decision.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Norman?
Yes, thank you for that. I think we just need some time for the seeking to understand piece. I'm overall very supportive of this. I did have a question of the union. I know that they had said they already conducted a survey of about 300 teachers. Is that correct? Is that only of teachers' union members? Or is that of other teachers around the district? Because I know we have over 60% teachers who are not in the union. So I want, I didn't know if they were also included in that discussion or if it violates anything.
I'll speak to that. As the Lawrence Education Association, we represent all teachers, whether they are members or not. We speak for our people that respond to our surveys, whether they are members or not. We speak for teachers.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I just didn't know if the survey was actually sent to non-union members as well. I just wanted that clarification. Because we are here, we want to seek to understand the entire community. And as mentioned, students are part of our community. Have we sought more input on what the students, and even those of us as parents, were seeking as well? So those are the only comments that I had. The other questions I had have already been asked. So, thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
I'm sorry, I did that last night. Ms. Norman, I share your similar concerns. I think, I think the educational components of this program, as was stated before, would be incredibly valuable for our community as a whole. Limiting to 400 students has me a bit concerned. I also am concerned that the task force was convened in 2018, and that was a lifetime ago. It was a pandemic ago. It was a school district that's changed significantly. And as a member of this board, I do feel that while I appreciate having some additional figures added to the proposal, it was done in a PowerPoint, not necessarily as a business proposal. And I have concerns to the piece that Ms. Dunn spoke about, the increasing costs that we, as a district, are bearing. As we know from the last board meeting, we have gone into deficit spending to pay down our health insurance for our teachers. And that is of significant concern. My first, and my first duty as a board member is to ensure that we use our taxpayer dollars wisely. I'm very supportive of having, you know, a curriculum that helps support the majority of our community. And I think it's critically important that we do so. But I feel there needs to be more time and more vetting done with our community members and with other partners to ensure that we are actually carrying out the will of our community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tucker?
I have a question. While I was reading through our notes from last meeting, Dr. Smith, can you elaborate on the portion where it says that utilizing this building as a school would be protecting our building as assets for our district? I just wanted to, can you elaborate on that?
Well, I think...
I have something else after that.
Certainly, if we don't utilize the building, which we already, this point of clarification, we currently have students that are in this building. We have Lawrence Advanced Academy, which is our high school alternative program, public. And we also have Ms. Niemeyer, several special needs students that are receiving services in the building. So we want to make that point of clarification. But if the building is not utilized, it could become open to charter schools if they so choose to take it. So it is important for us to utilize Craig as a school building. And I'm going to continue to recommend that to the Board of Education, that we do place students in this building. So that's part of the proposal. And that's all I have. To answer your question, ma'am?
Oh, yes. Is there a time limit or a timeframe on that? Like, if it's, is there a term to that? That, is there a deadline for that in order to, or? I'm hoping that I'm phrasing that correctly.
I think there is a deadline. I would have to get more specifics with that if we were not utilizing the building for something that, yes, a school could come in and ask to take part of the building, or take the building.
And I do appreciate every, everything that was shared today. It is something to think about. But it's a continuance of a continued concern of mine, of us having these concerns before we get to the day ask. I received your questions on Friday. We have to continue to have these questions, or have this dialogue amongst each other also. Because now, this, this needs to be processed. This needs to be taken in. I would love to, it is not the what, it's the how. That I will continue to like to have a part of what you're thinking and these ideas so I could have input and so that I can also have an ability to conversate with that. And I, that's not a jab. I sincerely mean that.
Well, and I, I respect that. I think a lot has happened in the last two weeks, especially since the election, as I alluded to in the comments, that made this happen. And especially comments that I've received from the public in the last, just over the last 48 hours. So this has really been one of those things that has, I think a lot of members of the public were not aware that there would be a vote on this this evening. And so I think that that's where I respectfully ask not to vote yes or no, but just like you, there's been a lot that we've had to process with the election and other things, and how that may impact the district. Is there a world where we can just postpone and get more information from the community?
And then the postponement, what would that affect? How would that, Dr. Smith? What would be the, if there was a postponement?
I mean, I work for you guys. You guys tell me what's going on.
Right, correct.
There's a lot of things that have been said that I didn't hear tonight, for tonight. And so I respect what the board does. People have to understand, I work for the board. And so, or you tell me what it is.
No, and this is just, it's not...
Time is always important.
Is there a percentage that the school has to be utilized? And, and we don't plan on having students in this proposed program until 2027. So it seems to me as though there is a bit of time. We're currently utilizing the building, which seems in adherence to state statute or to protect.
We're moving out in June 25.
But it was my understanding that it was about students using the building. Is that correct?
Currently, the building is being used as an administration. That will change in June 2025, because we will take possession of the building.
Understood. But I heard you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it needs to be used for students.
Well, we have students in the building, actually.
That's, that's right.
We do have students.
And, and so that's not, from my understanding of the proposal, that's not changing in any way. So we would still be adherents with...
Right. We still will have students in the building, but we will be working to, because we'll renovate the building, to have a new school in the building. So no one would be able to take the building if we're moving in that direction. And more than 50% of the building will be used at that time, when we get to the ultimate goal of filling the building. So we are protecting our asset.
Okay. So...
I have a few questions.
Is it the 50%? Is that the mark that you're saying?
Yes.
It's 60?
60. I don't have any... They have laws on that.
Yeah, it's 60%. And, and would it be reasonable to assume that if we don't have students in 2025, but the building is under renovation for classrooms for the children, that that would be protected? Okay.
I don't think it would.
Okay.
Our renovation would be before.
Right, okay. So I do have a couple of questions regarding custodial and maintenance. Mr. Smith, we are already paying for custodial and maintenance in this building, correct?
Correct. They're still under our district-wide maintenance program, so that side of it would not change.
That would not change.
But if we put more students in here, we may have to add one more person to cover the space that's utilized. And that would be through a growth, as the plan suggests. Right now, we're, we're doing all of upstairs, downstairs, and the lower level currently.
So we're taking care of the building already? So that wouldn't be an issue? I would like to say, from an historical point of view, that in 2018, we were having this conversation. And like many of the people, many of our public who's spoken tonight and the board, we were concerned that we needed to have a universal program in our schools that protected our children, protected them. And so we started our equity policy. And that was not a short-term endeavor. We worked on that for two years. We had a survey of over 2,000 respondents. And we have worked very hard with our public to create equity standards to remove barriers for all children, because we too felt at the time, and still, that all of our children need to have barriers removed. Having said that, I would like a couple of things, questions. We began an immersion program in 1994. And it started small. And because the... And because the program was so popular, Mr. Noter, could you kind of give us a background on how that program has grown and built over time? Because there was such a need for it, briefly? If you can.
So originally, it began with Forest Glen. Students from Forest Glen matriculated to Craig Middle School to Lawrence North.
And I believe there were two classrooms of 25 each, so there were 50 children in each classroom.
Yes, originally. And then, um, several years later, it was decided that Forest Glen would become completely dual-language, so completely Spanish immersion. By that time, Craig had closed, and so feeds into Fall Creek Valley and then Lawrence North. With the, um, large influx of Spanish speakers, as well as the, uh, community demand of English speakers to become bilingual, dual-language was expanded to Skiles Test Elementary, to Sunnyside Elementary. It's full dual-language, two-way schools. One-way dual-language was put in place at Harrison Hill Elementary, Indian Creek Elementary, Mary Castle Elementary. With the plan that Skiles Test, as well as some of the one-way programs, would matriculate to Belzer. Those students are now eighth graders at Belzer, and then on to Lawrence Central for next year. So that, that program has grown exponentially.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll, I'll give you the floor in a moment. So, um, could you also give us a little bit of a background on when you were principal at Belzer, and you're Honorbound, and how we marketed that to our families and what the response was? And how, what that program is today? And what were the results? What were the outcomes?
Sure. So the, the need really, at that time when I was principal, was around meeting the needs of potentially high-achieving African-American young men, and recognizing that we as a school were greatly underserving that population. And so began a program called Honorbound, where students were invited to participate, who really had the potential to excel academically if they were in the right environment, where it was cool to be smart, where it was cool to, to get good grades. And, um, the students have excelled, have excelled not only at the middle school, but in AP courses at the high school. Several have graduated, and most have gone on to college. But that program real, and it, it's still in existence today. So this, what we're talking about, the seating in terms of Craig Prep, is not taking the place of any of the programming that we currently have going in, in the district. But it's about another way to meet students' needs in a smaller environment. So the, the parent input at that, for that program, was really the sentiment that it was long overdue. And now we're going on, that was almost 15 years ago, that that was, was long overdue. And so really, very well-received by the community, very much appreciated by the community, and again, has shown success for, for those students.
And then, can you tell me what, what you would foresee if the demand for this program exceeds the space we have available here?
As a district, we have always been committed to meeting the needs of our community. And as those needs are expressed, either through where students choose to go to school, or students on a waitlist, that's really how the, the Spanish immersion program expanded, was because the waitlist had gotten to be significant. We worked to provide programming to meet the needs of our families, so that there's not waitlist, that families get what they want, and that we're able to meet their needs.
So if demand exceeds the space in this building, you could foresee, Dr. Smith, the possibility of expanding this program into more schools? Okay. And I, and I, um, I would like to thank everyone involved in Lawrence Township. Particularly, Dr. Smith, when you came to this district, it was a new phase of drilling down to the needs of every individual's child. And that has made all the difference, and I think that's why you see, and I, I sound like a broken record, but you see this graduation rate of 95% with 1% waivers, because we drill down to the needs of every single child. Lawrence Academy, Advanced Academy, was a new program that we instituted in this building, and it has proven to give our high schoolers a wonderful chance to, for credit recovery, and to make that graduation happen for them. I think that's, those are my questions. Those are my comments. Ms. Dunn, do you have?
Yes, thank you.
So I do have a question, Mr. Noter. Forest Glen started in the district as, my understanding, a gentrification of dual-language, of trying to keep primarily white families in the district because they were leaving to go to the international school. Is that correct?
Well, that was back in 1994, so I can't really speak to that.
Right, which I think that that's historically is something that is very well-known across central Indiana. I also know that the expansion of the programming is a result of the 25% of English learners that we have who are primarily Spanish-speaking, and the fact that that, uh, the dual-language is, in fact, based on research, one of the premier, top-tier ways to ensure that students are acquiring English.
Correct.
As well as becoming bilingual and biliterate. Tremendous programs, for sure. I do wonder what research we have on the curriculum that we are wanting to employ. Does it have the same type of research? Where have we gotten that research? Because I think what Ms. Muston is bringing up is a very valid point, that there are some programs that we have expanded, that research has shown are the right things to do. And I guess I'm just curious, in, in terms of a program that is just in one school that's Afrocentric, what is the research on that is opposed to ensuring that all students across all schools are getting access to that?
Yeah, and, and the research for Afrocentric education is not quite as strong as the dual-language research that you're, you're alluding to. But really, this proposal is about a small school environment with an Afrocentric focus. So it's not about it being Afrocentric, it's about it being small, that families have the opportunity to make that choice of, I want my students to be part of a class of 100 as a seventh grader or an eighth grader, as opposed to a class of 600 or 500 at our larger middle schools. So the, the small school really is the focus.
Which is great for those students, right? The small school, but it's for those 200 or 300 or 400 students that have access. Uh, small class sizes, though, we know that research shows that smaller class size show improved academic outcomes across the board, correct?
Um, the, I'm not familiar with that particular research. I'm familiar with research that indicates that a range of class size is optimum for academic needs.
The class sizes of 33, 34, that in some of our class, and that some of our schools, are not conducive necessarily to the best learning environment. And I think that that's where my focus is on student outcomes for the whole district, and what those student outcomes are going to look like for all of those students, the students who are not part of the small school. I also am curious as to how this is aligned to the equity work, because I did not see this as any of the goals or any of our metrics of having a school like this with the equity audit. So I may have missed something in that. But I, I don't believe that that was part of the equity audit. So I just want to make sure that it wasn't.
Oh, no, this school was not part of the equity audit.
Right, right, but it wasn't recommended.
When we first discussed this school, we decided to make our equity work District 1.
Okay.
Does that right?
Right, but it wasn't necessarily a recommendation, nor is it aligned to any of our goals, our board goals, as it pertains to student outcomes. Just want to make sure I'm not... Okay, thank you.
Board, do we have any more questions?
I just have a quick comment. Again, it's just from lived experience, as having a young black male within our township. And I have the experience of having a high-ability student whose needs were not met in education. And the byproduct of that is a, a smart child who's bored, that's, in my experience, where some, in my experience, where some of the behavioral concerns came from, and became a focus on behavior, and not so much on the intellect of my child. And so just as a mother who has experienced, and I am grateful, and that's, and that's one of the reasons why I chose to serve, is because I do have some experiences within our township. What I said, I am, Lawrence for me is like a marriage. It's not the things that are great that keep you there. It's those things that you ebb and flow, and you choose to grow with. And so I'm grateful for the high-ability review that makes it to where children like my son were able to be identified and be able to have their needs met. I say that to say, he was in the third grade when this cycle started. His first teacher of color was when he was in the sixth grade, and it was his best year. Representation matters. I hear all of the concerns that we are, we are expressing. There's things that I wish I could say and I can't say at, at this DAAS right now. But what I do know is I have a child who's now majoring in engineering. As a mother, I always saw it there. I just needed those, I needed the support to push my son. And Dr. Harshbarger, you already know, you kept me in this district. You remember them conversations I had with you. So I say that to say, just from lived experience, I know I was a mother that looked at other, um, other schools for my child, because I wanted my son to have a smaller environment. I wanted him to have an environment where he had a cultural awareness. And I saw for my, for myself, and I'm a, and I am, we are a family that focuses on heart health, not on color, not on anything else, of the heart health of our family. Are you a decent human being that treats people right? But my son noticed, and I saw as a parent, that my son had a tremendous change in the sixth grade, and the only thing that really changed was that he had a teacher of color that recognized and could identify. And so, and there were cultural nuances. There were things that made him enjoy learning again. So I say that to say, that is part, my lived experience is part of my why for the Craig Academy. Yes, I do have, I have a lot of questions. I have a whole onslaught of questions. Again, I appreciate the dialogue here. But again, that's just my experience as a parent and why I do support. Yes, I do continue to want to look forward to be answering these questions and leaning in to these things. But as a parent and as also neighbors, friends, who have thought about leaving, because this is needed. And I'll digress there. That's my comment.
Thank you very much. Board, if there are no further comments, the proposal to approve the Craig Academy has been moved and seconded. We'll be ready for a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'll be abstaining. I don't have the information to make an accurate vote this evening.
All right. We have approved the Craig Academy. Uh, we will move on to the approval of NEOLDA policies. Mr. Harshbarger. Dr. Harshbarger, I will get it right before my last meeting.
I'll answer to pretty much anything. Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board, earlier I brought to you for second reading, volume 36, number 2, NEOLDA revisions. I now recommend the board approve those as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the NEOLDA policies? All in favor of those approvals? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have approved the NEOLDA policies.
Madam President, I move we treat action items 5.06 through 5.12 as consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? And just for our public, again, we, we've said this before, but, um, our consent agenda are, are not what you'd call big-ticket items. Our consent agenda are minutes from the last meeting, approval of personnel reports, the approval of claims, the approval of service agreements, the approval of pay-ups and building project payments, the approval of fundraisers and field trips. And so are, um, are the types of, of business approvals we have to, we have to take care of. So...
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 We have approved our consent agenda. Which brings us to our board comments. We've had a lot of comments this evening already, but do we have any concerns or celebrations we haven't discussed?
Congratulations to all the, the students we celebrated today. I mean, that's why we're truly here. And to all the staff and parents who drive them to practice and do all the things. So that was a, a wonderful night. I also want to congratulate everyone at the state and local level on the recent elections. One of the unique, I guess, tightrope walks we serve as board members is being nonpartisan. And during this election cycle, I got to interact with both sides of the aisle, and it was encouraging that there are some people who understand our role, and other people who want us to be very one-sided. But I just want to thank the public for just coming out and sharing their heart, too. We got to interact with a lot of people in Lawrence who we normally wouldn't get to, to meet. And just so many wonderful things, some feedback we'll have to talk about. But, um, yeah, so budget's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker?
And I share the same sentiment. I can paint, uh, thank you, I, thank you to the public for the vote to retain my seat and the conver, I literally had thousands of conversations. And so, um, some were some sandpaper conversations. They rough you up to smooth you out. People are very passionate. And I can honestly say that it is a, it was a blessing to hear everything that I heard. Eleven meet and greets, speaking at churches. I had never went that hard, and I tell you that it was an absolute blessing, too, which I'm already out, just from the other work that I do. But the conversations and the love for our community. I saw the secretary from Harrison Hill, when I went to Harrison Hill. She knew my name, and I don't know if that's good or bad, but she knew my name. I saw Mr. Majors, an educator of mine, who saw the gold in me as a child and pulled that. And actually, he literally, because I always, I mean, I often say that, our, our leaders who show their leadership skills a little differently, that we may call them difficult. They just need to have those skills cultivated. And it was, um, Mr. Majors that saw that skill in me as a child. So I say that to say, it was so many conversations that were had that continued to root me in why I'm in Lawrence. Just born, bred, and love it here. And so I'm grateful, and I am, I am honored to continue to serve and continue to hear from every point of view. That is one thing. I am passionate. Unfortunately, I'm not emotional. And it's been a blessing to share that passion, hear the passion of others, and see how I can continue to serve in this capacity. So that's my comment. So thank you. Thank you all.
I would like to congratulate, um, Mr. Ron Davy and Ms. Tracy Means for all the work you've done over the years, our Lawrence Advanced Academy. I see that's a, that's a 10-year trajectory now. We celebrated that a few weeks ago. And if you look at our graduation rate from 10 years ago, it goes like this. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate you very much. There are so many celebrations in our district. I'm leaving too many out. We, the district got a wonderful award from the National, um, no, National... Oh, I'm sorry. English, English, English Language Learners, uh, the National Organization. Yes. And, um, Dr. Smith was recognized on behalf of the district for the, for the incredible work we have done, which is huge for, in our English language learning and our dual-language, which is an incredible honor and a national recognition. Our next meeting will be December 16th, on Monday, and we will begin at 5:30. Dr. Smith, do you have comments for us this evening? Oh, did, I, I thought they said they had none.
Happy Thanksgiving. Hope everybody has a great break.
Yeah.
I also, no, that's okay, but I also want to... But I also want to take a moment and congratulate Vice President Norman, as well as Secretary Puckett. And I'm very excited to work with Ms. Mahal. So excited for the new year. And we've only got one more board meeting.
In the mass.
So yeah, and thank you for your service. We'll certainly be celebrating you at the next board meeting, President Muston.
Thank you so much.
I have no comments, Board. Look at their eyes.
Thank you all for...
Good night, everyone.
Yeah. Thank you. We are adjourned. Oh, we need to move to be adjourned.
So moved.
And now we're adjourned.
Thanks for, thank you all for really good, really good...